Well, welcome. Tonight, we're gonna go through the upcoming warrant at the town meeting. For people who don't understand how important it is, every penny, either spent or recouped, has to be approved by town meeting. I mean, I laugh when people say, "You had an article once for thirty-two dollars and eighty cents." Every penny, the town meeting members give it and the town meeting members take it back. So, we have thirty-six articles. Let's start. First Street Fire Station Remediation.
So, they're dealing with the PFAS issue, very much like we are in other places within town. So PFAS doesn't go away. As a result, you have to remediate. And with the fire department using the burn house, and they did use materials that contain PFAS because it puts out fires very well and protects them from heat as well. We had, as you know, we were talking earlier, the fire, the equipment, the auto garments that they wear, you know, the heavy, what we look at as a raincoat, but all of their fire gear had PFAS in it. And it was causing firefighters to end up with cancer. So, Milford would change in that, but as a result, in this particular event, you have PFAS on the property. And the state, as well as the federal government, are requiring remediation.
Well, the foams, when you think about it, the perfluoro alkoxyalkanes were prevalent in all the foams for the reasons you mentioned.
Right.
And every place, military bases that practiced fire prevention, or fire cessation, all used the foam. And the foam was great because you put it down, it smothered the fire, and then it went away. It just dissolved into the ground and disappeared. So everybody used it. Then they found out that it's carcinogen.
Similar to when we grew up, DDT, best insecticide in the world, it was so non-polar, it got in the nervous system of the insects and killed them all. Well, this is the same way. Gets into your body and stays. So, right now, we're looking for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. But that's just to think about the possibilities of the study.
Page two.
Five, that's right.
The actual work comes in later, and we don't know how much that's gonna cost us.
It'll be a lot more than a hundred fifty thousand.
Uh, yeah. Article two, a hundred fifty thousand dollars for Charles River Trail remediation.
Again, we're dealing with a similar situation where, as far as chemicals in that particular area.
Well, we thought this was dead and buried. You know, for the longest time, we thought we had satisfied the environmental agency and it was gone. And then my understanding is they came back and said, "Oh, just kidding. We want you to take a deeper look." So now, we're taking a deeper look. And this is, we call it Charles River, it's the old stylon. After we play baseball, you come out and you see the pretty colored pools of chemicals that were left out to dry.
The berry pot's still there, it's the dead pot that's not. They came back and gave it life. So, we thought it was buried. It was. As far as it being dead and gone, it's not. And they're finding that in a number of different, not just in this community, but elsewhere.
Well, it's like the levels for pesticides and herbicides. As Ula Packard, Adulant determined lower levels of detection, the EPA lowered the levels that they would accept. You know, it used to be parts per million was the acceptable level because you couldn't analyze below parts per million. Then with advanced gas chromatography systems, they went to parts per billion. What a surprise. Now the EPA wants you to remediate to parts per billion.
It's not a bad thing, though.
No, except for your budget.
That's true, but as far as our health and our water systems and other things.
Yeah. Pickup truck for the parks department.
Safety five thousand. Recurring costs, right, of repairing and replacing capital?
This is one, I think, was the one that they got secondhand from the sewer department. And they'd been milking it and milking it, but eventually, you run out of ability to fix things.
Yeah. Well, you would know. You keep track of everything back to the Middle Ages, so, on the capital committee.
Article four, three hundred thousand dollars to paint the inside of Town Hall. We can't get bins with a paintbrush?
No, it doesn't work that well. And you're dealing with the historic building, and, you know, Town Hall is the center of the town. I mean, that is the true central forum, et cetera, and that's where the town's business is conducted.
Well, the impression is so important, but I think realistically, when you look at the upper Town Hall, you'd need an awful big paintbrush to reach up there. You can't just have anybody going in painting that.
But we see that in other large buildings in town. You know, if you take a look at the local churches and the work they've had to do.
We're running the same problem at St. Mary's.
Right.
The staging is one of the most expensive parts. The painting isn't the problem. It's staging it so they can reach it.
But the other side of it, you know, it's kinda like painting your house. You know, you can either have the house on the street that people think it's haunted and they don't wanna see it on the street, or you can have the house that everybody looks at and says, "They're keeping that in good shape."
But what you said, Tom, is profound, it is the center of the town business. It's the impression that you give of Milford.
Sure.
Just don't, when it comes to the outside, just don't paint it pink again. I remember, I can't remember how many decades ago we had a pink Town Hall. That one, it's hard to f-.
Didn't go over?
No.
It might be a little tougher now that it's a historic site, so.
That's right.
Article five.
Two lawnmowers.
Two lawnmowers.
More of the same.
More of the same. They've reached their life expectancy. And these are not your little Lowe's pushmowers. These are the big crab-looking things with attachments, because they're not just cutting lawns with it, they have to cut brush and everything else.
I hope so, for fifty-five thousand.
Yeah. Ariana Circle. What does it mean to accept a circle?
It's, well, the circle is the street, so the street has to be built to the specifications of the public roadways. And in order for, in order for the street to be taken by the town, it has to be accepted by town meeting, because it's an asset. And, you know, it is reviewed by town officials, as far as town engineer, et cetera, as far as drainage and width of the roadway and the asphalt, you know, was it done properly? So, and from there, the town would take it and it becomes a public way.
But, you know, even before they accept it, the town starts plowing it and taking care of it, right?
They do as a matter of practice. You know, the question is, do we have to? No, none of us.
No, but if I'm paying town taxes on my house.
Right. There are people residing there, so.
Right. I'm living, I was living in the house for a year before they accepted Lee Elaine, but I'm paying full taxes, I expect services.
Right.
This one hits home. You did the first skate park.
I can't.
But, one thing I wanna bring out, and we mentioned at the review, they're asking for a hundred ninety thousand for the design.
Right.
But it's a two million dollar project. So, we want people to understand, if you're not supporting the two million dollar project, don't support the hundred ninety thousand, because it's not something that you can design it and then walk away from it and get a refund.
Right. You're, well, you're either in for the hundred ninety or you're not. So, if, if you're gonna spend the hundred ninety, does that necessarily mean, are you willing to take a loss, I guess, for a hundred ninety? You know, and not build the park? You know, my involvement in the initial park was, I had been talking to Mike Brashani for some time about a skate park, because we were dealing with meeting the police department, kids that were skateboarding at Town Hall on the granite steps, at Draper Park, on the actual memorials, you know, the listing of soldiers, and damaging those particular sites. So, in looking at it, you know, you can either chase kids around with their skateboards every day, all day, or try to figure out, how can we accomplish?
Plus, it's disrespectful.
Yeah, I, you know, for, for the young kid, they're not looking at it from that perspective.
No, but for the veterans and the peoples who have family.
It most certainly is. The kids they're looking at is, this is a challenge in using the skateboard. So, what took place was, there was a skate park, an indoor one, in Medway, and he was going out of business.
Didn't you buy his stuff?
So I bought all of the skate park, the interior skate park, and with highway and parks department, we moved it up to Town Park, and it was actually in one of the courts.
So we had a limited skate park in the Town Park at one point?
Yeah.
And it shut down?
One of the basketball courts.
It lasted for, because it was primarily built with wood, so it lasted for about four years.
And then what happened?
And it just deteriorated as a result of weather and.
Yeah.
But yeah, I bought it for a lot less than a hundred ninety thousand. I think I paid twenty thousand, but I used drug forfeiture money, some money that we took from drug dealers, and we built the park.
I mean, I think you gotta be a little careful with the sunk cost fallacy that you were talking about before. I mean, a hundred ninety thousand, do the design, do the analysis, but I think it's fair for us to say, "Town meeting, you get a second bite at the apple here." And depending on what the finances of the town at the time and what the ultimate cost is, people need to.
My point is, if you're dead set against.
If you're dead set against it, it's lost money. I agree with you.
Correct.
I mean, we did caution people when they came up to talk to us a couple of weeks ago, that we want them to pursue grants and, let's see if we can get this down to a manageable number, right? But I agree with you.
Yeah, because they were talking about 1.7, or, which will probably be closer to two million by the time it's done.
Yeah.
One question that came out is, and you can answer this, Tom, liability. Are we taking on a large liability with a skate park?
Well, no more than you are with any other type of recreational. I mean, it's gonna boil down to, the liability in using an open forum like that, that the town owns, is limited, and the town's limited liability anyway.
So nobody's gonna sue us for Town Hall?
They're not gonna take the Town Hall. They, they wouldn't get enough to paint the Town Hall. So, you know, given that.
Article eight is, we set up a stabilization account for the water department once we bought it, but we didn't fund it. This is transferring from retained earnings into the stabilization account. Stabilization accounts worked well for the town.
Yep.
Can't imagine why we wouldn't support it for the water company. Article nine, recurring article every year, ADA compliance.
A hundred fifty thousand every year, and then, I think it's under Rick in the first instance, to just try to figure out what the best use of the money is, right?
It's, yeah, it's looking at each of our facilities and determining, you know, the needs, because we did a study, along with the state, to determine where we have to do work. And then it's a matter of going in, such as, you know, the police station, we had to redesign a piece of that ramp, but we had to redo the ramp, as far as some of the sections, as well as the staircase at the police station, the railings, et cetera. But there are facilities throughout, you know, we found, for instance, men's and ladies, you know, facilities at the police station that were not handicap, you know, as far as rails and things of that kind, that were primarily used by employees. So, we're treating employees different than the public. And so we had to take care of, you know, not a big issue, but nevertheless, an issue. So, we found that in a number of the different facilities. I know we just redid the bathrooms at the Town Hall on the lower level, and took into account a number of different standards as they relate to handicapped persons' access. So, good thing.
When we look at Article ten, the sewer commissioners, talking about using up to four hundred thousand dollars for an infiltration, I guess, exfiltration study. My understanding is, you really don't have a choice. You have to prove, sixty miles that we have, how can it handle the peak? Because I think the average water use is a million and a half gallons a day, and it can go up to three million. So you gotta do a study and prove it, that you can handle it.
It's a state mandate?
It's one of those wonderful, those terms, I rank almost profanity, like two and a half override.
Unfunded mandate?
Unfunded mandate, yes. That's close to profanity. Public way, what did we skip twelve?
You skipped eleven.
Skipped eleven. Tom, why don't you, or Andy, you both can explain this one.
So the ADA litigation costs, and it's under the legal department, is that we have an understanding that there are a number of complaints that have been filed with the state access board, and that there is potential litigation otherwise. These funds would be, would allow the legal department the ability to hire expert witnesses to testify to either our compliance or how we're going to come into compliance. The actual legal cost, town council.
Well, Brian Murray came before us and said, "I'm not hiring lawyers to defend us. That's what I'm gonna do." Which made me feel a lot better to say, "We have a good legal counsel, why don't we use them?" We are gonna use them. But if we have to bring in experts to defend our position, that's what the money would be.
You know, to the extent we're talking about any of the more recently done projects, it's a little bit frustrating to me that we even have to have these conversations, because you would think that all of these requirements are pretty well laid out. This isn't the first municipal pool that's been built, but here we are, so.
And the, the big is the two-letter word, if. If we need an expert witness, if there is a violation.
And if not, the money goes right back to the general fund for use in the future.
Correct.
Article twelve, conservation commission. Open space plan.
Yeah, they, what did they tell us? That this was a follow-up to the general town plan.
Right.
And that having this plan completed was a trigger for potential grants in the future.
Yeah, apparently, I think it was Scotty that told us that a lot of the grants you can't even apply for unless you have an open space plan. So the sixty thousand dollars is a lot of money, but on the other hand, it gives us access to apply for grants in the future. Thirteen, public way discontinuation.
So it's, it's discontinuation of a street that goes up to the Maspinock Rod and Gun Club. It's abandoning a street that we abandoned long ago. So it's not utilized by the town as a public way. It sits very close to the Rod and Gun Club, and what they wanna do is come back to a point away from the Rod and Gun Club, where their property is on either side of this roadway that, in our eyes or from an aerial view, doesn't exist, and create a barrier. So they'll put up a gate, and then they would maintain from that gate.
So we're not ripping up roads or destroying anything?
No.
We're just saying, the last hundred fifty feet that we don't use at all, you take care of it.
Right. And we're not, right, so we're not gonna take care of it.
We're not gonna plow it, we're not gonna maintain it.
Correct, we're gonna give it to them.
But it's a whole hundred fifty feet, they let them protect their property.
And the only people that use it, or should be using it.
Are their members.
Other members of that Rod and Gun Club.
Robbie came with us with Article fourteen, to expand the canine program.
There was, you know, they, they put on a couple of canines, meaning the German shepherds, that, as far as doing tracking work for police, law enforcement efforts, as well as finding people that are lost. And there's been one newspaper article after the other, you know, an autistic child that Officer Sanquioni, Brian Sanquioni, tracked and found holding onto a tree in the water. His dog tracked an Alzheimer's patient who was off in the woods again, in a condition where, you know, hypothermia setting in. So, he's had numerous successes with his dog.
And I think that's the biggest misunderstanding, is people watch TV and see the programs where in twenty minutes, the canines are used to track down killers and drug lords. And they don't understand that the real success is tracking down your grandma when she walked out with dementia, or some little child that got lost.
Yeah, without a question. And so those, those, the two dogs there, one has just left the department and they're bringing another canine in. The officer transferred to another agency. So rather than break up the handler from the dog, which is not really a good thing, they found out in the, with the military, so it's common just to let him take the dog.
And the hundred thirty-five thousand dollars is not all for dog?
No, no.
Eighty thousand dollars for the dog car?
Right. The vehicle, and it has to be equipped, you know, for the same reason you don't leave your dog in a vehicle, because it either gets very hot or very cold. So, these cars are regulated where, there's a second system that will come on on its own to maintain the level.
Plus, I understand that the dog gets used to a car, and it's not good to jump cars around.
Right. And that, that dog becomes, I mean, that's the dog's home.
Right.
It's no different than the pen that you would put at the house. You know, we, you end up putting a fenced-in area, a doghouse, et cetera, for the dog at the officer's home. So same, same type of situation, but, you know, the other dogs that they use in other comfort dogs, as we know them, and now, you see them going into schools, the senior center, through the family services unit, as well as the court prosecutor, Brian, he has a dog where, I've run into him several times at the courthouse, but they, they do go to all different, you know, situations where they're encountering in the public, and particularly events where you get someone that's in distress, and they've found those dogs to be a true asset, so.
Article fifteen, longest article on.
Accessory dwellings.
This is just a cleanup, as I understand it, of the new legislation, to get some compliance, regulating the number of parking spaces, public, if there's public transit, I think there's some exemptions for the parking space requirements.
This is a lawyer's dream.
Yeah.
Fifteen pages to say, "You can build Grandma a small house in the backyard."
Actually, the fifteen pages, that's the stormwater regulations.
Oh, that's the stormwater?
Yes, yes.
You're two ahead.
But the, but the accessory law is just as bad, you know? We're gonna make sure that Grandma is living well.
Yeah.
That's the best I can say on that one.
But it's basically just cleaning up our bylaws to make sure that we're in compliance. Cedar Street and Main Street Design.
Oh, we can talk about that all night. So that's Route eighty-five as Route sixteen. You can't put a traffic light there and have it last more than a day. Track the trailer, can't make that turn. So the light where the old Gibbs was, we actually moved it back onto the property, they gave us a right of way to do that, and it still gets.
Still gets hit.
Clipped, but they get clipped on each of the corners. The intersection is really a difficult one, because it gives you the sense that it comes to a T, and it's not. There's an offset side street, and then you have the turn that's coming, once you make the right turn from Cedar Street onto Main Street. It's, it's a really tough intersection to regulate, and it's gonna take some takings there, as far as some land, to rebuild that intersection, without a question.
Well, Scotty had said the, eventually, you will be on the hook for half a million dollars, like five hundred and forty thousand dollars.
For the actual cost of implementing the design, we're getting a discount on the design effectively.
Yeah. So the first ninety gets you twenty-five percent completion of the documents, and then the state comes in and pays for most of the.
The actual work.
For the work.
Which, which is what occurred, you know, along Main Street. That's, you know, when we went from Water Street, actually.
To the hospital.
Right, right, from Water to the hospital, but also when we did the traffic lights from Water Street going all the way back down Main Street and East Main Street, where they changed the traffic lights.
Now, Article seventeen, you're right, this is the mammoth wording article. As a matter of fact, in the finance committee report, through one that went to town meeting, I said, "Refer to the actual warrant," because I can't imagine, except for some diligent lawyers, that anybody's gonna read all this.
Yeah. I have nothing to add on the stormwater regulations.
Yeah, I don't know that the diligent lawyers have read it either, other than the ones that wrote it.
Article eighteen, to appoint a highway surveyor versus currently electing one.
I believe that in today's environment, that we should appoint, this, this particular position, the requirements, the knowledge requirements and the skill requirements are such that to simply, and this isn't a question of whether or not the public, you know, elects the appropriate person, it really comes down to, do we, the members of the general public, to include me, have a full understanding of what that position, the requirements of that position? For instance, if you came to me to pave a roadway, I'm lost.
But it's like electing a surgeon. Can be the nicest guy, the smartest guy, never been a physician, do you want him doing surgery on you as he learns? You know, we had that a couple of years ago, when we changed from, one of the finance positions, from elected to appointed. And sure enough, that year, we had nice guy, wanted to get into town government for all the right reasons. And sure enough, that year we had nice guy, wanted to get into town government for all the right reasons, had no finance background at all, and he was running for treasurer.
You you run, I mean, you know, we're talking about stormwater management, we're talking about a number of different things, even within these articles, which you need the expertise within that agency, the Highway Department, to step up and deal with those issues. If you elect someone that doesn't have that skill set, they're going, they'll have to hire people that have the skill set in order to serve the town. So ultimately, it costs you more because you didn't go through that vetting process of hiring the person to fit the job.
And the large gorilla in the room is that people are, some people are interpreting this as, Tom, you're trying to do a power grab.
Well, Tom, yes, as a member of the select board.
Select boards trying to do a power grab.
Um, far from it, you know, you know, if you look at town government, you can have, I mean, take the project down on Central Street, you know, you have to close the roadway. Tough decision, you know, and and we've seen it every day on Main Street and and other side streets. You know, Dilla Street, it's no longer, hey, we backed up to the Water Department, it's we're backed up to Route four ninety five. So, you know, the impacts and the phone calls and the emails, et cetera. Essentially, the the select board's in the same position of just saying, it's not our issue.
It's not your expertise.
Well, and and also, it's not our issue, so it's not for us to resolve the concern. You have to go to that elected official. And likewise, you know, with parks issues, and I'm not saying centralize everything, what I'm saying is we're not looking for a power grab, not at all. This is to ensure that you have the round peg in the round hole, or it's gonna cost you more money in the long run, or you're gonna have some real problems because you're not accomplishing what the community needs through that department. Whether it be paving roads, stormwater, removal of snow, all the different things that, you know, everyone thinks, oh, I can plow my own driveway.
Until the big storm comes.
Not everyone can use a plow, and not everyone can drive those trucks and use a plow, so.
Article nineteen, four hundred thousand dollars into a revolving car account to deal with stormwater.
Well, we took a chunk of money out of the stormwater to deal with, what was that, Godfrey Brook? Back in May. So we depleted those funds, and I think the argument was opportunities may come up to do work, they may have a cooperative grant, they need access to to money at the at that time, they can't be running to town meeting for emergency meetings.
Well, they can't be waiting.
Oh, you'd be waiting unless you were going for an emergency meeting request, right?
But if you needed two hundred thousand dollars, you got special town meeting, annual town meeting.
Right, right.
Because even the FinCom, we have what, a hundred and a quarter for emergencies? So the idea was if we ran into a real emergency where you needed Ivy Lane when that collapsed, you can't sit there and say, oh, we'll wait six months and ask town meeting and then wait six months to do it. So it's a revolving account, the highway surveyor still has to account for how he spends it.
And if you look at it, that supports Article eighteen. You have to have someone that understands this.
We go to twenty, police firearms repairs.
Then they done that. So you have an indoor firearms range and you're utilizing the weapons to train the officers. And what you're doing is you're building up dust. And the dust you're building up could make someone very, very sick, their respiratory system, you could do serious damage. You're also building up lead content in the backdrop, which has to be cleaned out. So when they clean it out, they take the whole thing apart, there's big rubber baffles back there that catch the bullets. So, and believe it or not, it backs up to the chief's office, interestingly enough.
Chief has to stay popular or they could find one of those panels missing.
Or make sure that they're not shooting without the panels. But they literally come in and all of that's hazardous materials, so that's where you get the cause factor because they have to scrub everything down as well.
Well, to replace it is what, six hundred thousand dollars?
That's what we were told, yeah.
So a hundred fifty thousand dollars seems like a worthwhile investment.
And he's replacing in there the electronics as well. I mean, they were put in there in nineteen ninety, so if you just.
We've gotten, we've gotten our use out of it.
Right, and if you just, the electronics have been there since then, and if you just look at your own automobile and compare it to the one you had in nineteen ninety as far as, you know, the ability, the electronic abilities, so.
Article twenty one. Hundred twenty two thousand dollars of brush chipper.
Routine replacement, right?
Yeah, I think the Highway Department had mooched the Health Department's brush chipper and chipped trees in brush until it chipped itself to death. So now it's time. I mean, if you're gonna maintain the Charles River Trail, you're gonna maintain the the natural areas in town, you need a brush chipper, and eventually the chipper stops chipping. Covert asset management study. Seventy five thousand dollars, Article twenty two.
That seemed like a big number to us at first, but then they explained to us it's actually a pretty good, good sized job to do all this mapping. And they felt like we really.
Well, I was amazed because I said, how many culverts do we have in town, ten, twenty? What does it take to map out ten culverts? And then Scotty said it's a hundred fifty?
Yeah, and they didn't have the capacity to have the people do it in the ordinary course of their duties.
Not that many.
And I think this is to put it on the GIS system as well, so you know sizes, which we don't have all that information, is my understanding, so the size, the cover, what the cover is actually handling for with, you know, capacity or is it overcapacity? So it's a matter of having that at your fingertips, I think, as far as dealing with, then again, the state on grants and things of that nature to maintain these culverts or to replace. Would put us in a better position.
Article twenty three, the food pantry fencing. Anybody who's seen it doesn't know how it's still kinda standing almost. So it's a matter of, its time has come and nineteen thousand dollars to replace it. Article twenty four, a new lift. I think the question came out is, we have a lift, it works, why do we need a new lift?
Because it may be occupied and it's delaying other work, right?
And that was the big thing, Scotty puts up a truck, starts taking it apart and finds out he needs to haul it apart, so do some work on it, and one of his other trucks breaks down and now you got two trucks out of service. So the second lift gives him the ability to stage work. Plus, if the lift breaks or needs repair, you gotta back up. And that's a hundred twenty thousand dollars. Hy-Vac for the fire chief, hundred twenty thousand dollars.
One ninety.
Oh, one ninety?
Yeah.
Yeah.
HVAC.
Yeah. The compressors, they're old.
Well, I think it's the whole system, for the last two, three years, we've been talking to the chief and the lieutenant chief, and they've been buying bubble gum and Band-Aids and they actually had to go out and buy what I call Lowe's style air conditioners to make it through. And we put it off last year, we talked about it the year before, and I think this year it's finally, there's only so much bubble gum you can use to keep those compressors and ducts working. School committee.
This is upgrading the electronics, right, I mean.
It's upgrading the network and the switches.
To to Tom's point about, you know, technology changing and upgrading all the time. This is something.
And we've been getting e-grants to take care of eighty percent of that expense, but the switches, the systems do eventually get to a point where you have to replace them. And that hundred ninety may be twenty percent of the real true cost if we had to pay the whole thing. It's been in the plan for two, three years. Big one coming, fire truck. You know, good Chief Nelson needs to get a new name because it was fun saying Tui Toys. It's no longer Nelson Toys, it doesn't have the same ring.
Well, Nelson New Fire Truck.
Nelson New.
I mean, this is something that's been on the capital list for some time. This opportunity came about to purchase now because another community backed out of purchasing the fire truck that's being built. It's my understanding that you, if you're going to buy, you get in line.
For three years.
Until, right, until they can build the vehicle for you. And that if we wait, they are still behind the eight ball because the engine they want to replace should be replaced, and that the cost would be much higher.
The thing too is, the truck we want, they have the standard truck and the heavy duty trucks.
Right.
And Milford's always gone for the heavy duty because instead of getting twenty five years, you get twenty eight to thirty years out of the truck. And apparently, the community that had an order in had an order for almost exactly the same truck we want. And it's not just being a heavy duty suspension, which is part of it, but it has a bigger tank of water, has have larger fixtures.
And it's compatible with the engines that they operate now, so there's there's not a learning curve there as well to utilize the equipment on that vehicle.
And this was the one that last year, when things got tight, we asked Mark, can you squeeze another year out of it? And he said, yes, but next year I really need it. And that shows the relationship the town management has with Fire Department, Police Department, is that you can have honest conversations. And he passed over his request for an engine, counting on the fact that this year we wouldn't let him down.
Yep.
Still hurts at one point three million dollars.
Fortunately, we have the money this year.
Yep. I mean, we're lucky that we have six million dollars and I hate using the word free cash because it's not free. Comes out of my pocket as a taxpayer, but we have a six million dollar surplus that we can cover some of these things now.
I paid my free cash the other day.
We all did.
Quotally taxes.
The big surprise for the fall was the school committee finished their survey of Stacy School.
Yes, and we found out they're anticipating seven million dollars worth of upgrades that need to be phased in over multiple years with two point two million this year for heating and cooling related issues, and yes, that was a surprise from our standpoint. It it doesn't sound like there's an immediate threat to the ability to heat and cool the building, but it's good capital maintenance, people have concluded that these are age systems and we need to start putting into place.
We can't forget that a few years ago, in the high school, the boiler went out. And there was no ye olde boiler store that we could go and ask for fifty year old pipes. So you gotta stay on top of it because even if, and I'm assuming the town will support it, even if we support this two point two million dollar phase, it's gonna be next summer before they can do it.
Sure.
So Carlos is going through a winter of more bubble gum. But it will be, all told, seven million dollars by the time you put in all the ducting and everything that needs done. And they warned us that Stacy. They started surveys on the other schools. Because even our youngest school, Woodland, is ten years old, it's hard to believe, it's ten years. Vernon Grove Fence.
This is the consultant, right? And this is just what to establish protocols for operation of the cemetery.
I gotta refresh my memory on this one.
Professional Consultant Services. Doc, they have a documented standard operating procedures.
Oh, I remember this.
They've been relying upon everyone's memory of.
No, we relied on Lynn Lovell.
Yeah, Lynn Lovell would tell you where.
We relied on Lynn Lovell when saying, my grandfather is buried somewhere in here, and Lynn would go, lot thirty two A dash B. And this is happening, oh, do this to fix it. So finally, we're getting around to saying, you know, in today's digital age, we should have some of this stuff written down so we're not relying on one person's memory.
And it's good to know that grandpa is in thirty two A B.
Compensated absences, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, Article thirty.
So that's a fund that deals with primarily police and fire upon retirement. So they retire and we have to pay for their vacation, we have to pay for their personal leave days that they have accumulated.
But this is part of their compensation package.
This is part of the contracts, right, so then, you know, they have sick leave buyback.
So it's police and fire, sick leave, vacation, that when they retire, they have X number of days that they didn't use that they were entitled to use.
Right, and the, so the town has to pay them a lump sum, which if you took it from the budget, the reason this fund came about, I was one of the reasons, because if you take that from my budget in May, when I'm pretty much coming to the end of the budget.
Yeah, well, we came to you and you say, I've got thirty two dollars and eighty cents left in my budget, and I need to pay this guy X dollars.
And I was disappointed I had thirty two dollars, that I couldn't find something that would benefit the department.
This has lasted us two, three years?
Right, so would you run into, and I ran into it one year, is you you come into the department head and you're saying to the police chief or fire chief, okay, pay this money out. I can't deficit spend. So I'm I'm literally in a bind that as I come to the end of the year, if I don't have the funds there, you know, I've paid that person, now I don't have the funds to me payroll.
And now you can't always plan on it because somebody says, I'm gonna, I I ran into a problem, I'm gonna retire. Well, I'm sorry, you gotta wait till next budget year to retire, you know, you can't do it.
Right, well, they look at the chief and they say, you are the problem, I'm retiring, so. It can be one of a number of things, but the fact remains is just what you said, they the individual employee decides when they want to retire, they simply notify the retirement.
And if it's a long term employee, there's a lot of days you have to pay.
Right.
But it's worked out well this way that we put a lump sum like two hundred fifty thousand, and that could last two years, it could last three years, and then we just replenish it.
Right, you're in a cycle now where this'll last a lot longer than, I mean, we're just.
You've got a lot of young officers.
Right, we're just coming out of a cycle as far as retirements, where we saw a number of retirements. I mean, the the Police Department, when I came to the Police Department, two thousand two, you're looking at today, I think there's two or three, three, three employees that I can think of that were there in two thousand two when I came in, so.
Article thirty one is one of these articles that you have to laugh at. We're gonna take up the whole town meeting to talk about a difference in the town accountant's contract of twenty eight hundred dollars. But every penny has to be approved by town meeting, we can't pay him his differential in his contract even though it's only twenty eight hundred dollars without town meeting approval. We have a number of collective bargaining replenishments. And Police and Fire are the biggest, they run about two hundred thousand dollars each, Articles thirty three, thirty two and thirty three. But you got Clerical, I think that's the mace, that is thirty thousand dollars, and the Library, which is fifteen. And this is a strategic move that we don't tell the departments, well, you can. we don't tell the departments, well, you can offer up to X percent. Because if I was the negotiator on the employee side, I'd say, oh, great, I know what my beginning is. So we say, we're going to budget nothing. Negotiate the best contract you can for the town and the employees. And then for that first year, we'll supplement for police and fire, we need two hundred thousand dollars extra.
Makes sense, but you know, the other side of it is, and I'm very pleased that we've been able to reach agreements with each of these unions. And then just today, I signed the agreement with the water employees, the water department. So, you know, we've met our obligation to bargain in good faith with, you know, police, fire, mace, which is the clerical employees, a town hall and other departments, library and now water. So we've found our way through a number of different collective bargaining scenarios over the past year. And they've, Labor Council and Town Council, along with the Finance Director, really have done a bang-up job
And this worked.
To accomplish it.
I mean, by giving you, as a negotiator, wiggle room, you can negotiate the best contract. If we tied your hands and said, well, we can fund up to three or four percent. Well, why would the negotiator on the other side not want to take it all?
Right, and that's the, you know, the essence of good faith. You go in and they make a presentation and you counter, or you make a presentation, they counter. So, but we, you know, we're not going to arbitration, we're not going to joint labor management to try to resolve.
But that's a Milford thing. You read in the papers how many towns go to war with themselves, that the union's fighting the town, and you don't see that in Milford.
Yeah, it's very rare. They tend to reach agreements, but, you know, and sometimes it's prolonged, the negotiations. In this instance, you know, we're fortunate that both sides came to an understanding that they.
But we've had it where it's gone over a year.
Sure.
And then we just have to kind of squirrel away a little extra money just in case. The last article, stabilization.
So we're proposing to add another, I think it's approximately one point eight million into our stabilization.
Why are you adding to stabilization? It's so big now.
Because as Al Correa would say, there's a high school coming. And we're probably going to have to draw down on some of the stabilization and probably raise some taxes, frankly, in the context of a lower excess levy that we've been enjoying for years now. We are trying to avoid the profanity, as Al would call it, Proposition Two and a Half or Dead Exclusion. But we know that the high school work, whatever we do, is not going to be cheap. And I think the town is engaging in prudent planning and squirreling money away in preparation for all that.
Are you saying there's a possibility of a plan of doing this high school without a prop? Dead exclusion?
I think there is more than a possibility. I think some of us will lie on the tracks to have that happen.
I mean, that's incredible when you think about, we started out saying, there's a school coming and we've got to build up stabilization for Brookside. And the management of the town was good enough that we never touched stabilization for Brookside. Then it was, well, Woodland. I mean, it's not nineteen million, now we're talking sixty million dollars. Every town around us is doing dead exclusions. Somehow, we figured out a way of not doing it. But I never thought that we'd stand a chance of not having a dead exclusion. I'm not saying it's a given, but the fact that there's a chance that we won't have a dead exclusion is amazing. Because of the fleet, this is the aircraft carrier.
Yep.
Oh, you're not kidding. It's more like death exclusion.
No. Well, it's, it's hard to think through. It's getting closer for me because pretty soon I'll be a social security recipient. And that'll be, you know, my income is social security. But there's people who are living on just social security. You know, two grand a month. And to talk to them about, oh, it's only five hundred dollars a year extra. That could mean the difference between dinner and meds. And these are the people who built our town. So.
Yeah, it's real money.
We'll see what happens. But overall, I wouldn't trade Milford's financial condition for anybody else's in the area. Any last words?
I think we're going into town meeting and we're in good shape. You know, each of these items have been vetted through the Finance Committee. And now they'll go before town meeting. And I think that people will see the fact that, you know, they've really been looked at. And the reputation of the Finance Committee, I think, is going to.
Yeah, and for anybody who's interested, years ago, we made the commitment that we would post on the town website, all the information we get as the Capitol Committee. So if you're interested in looking at, why are we buying this fire truck and how are we buying it? And why do we need it and what's the process and what the specs? They're all up there. I remember when we bought the ladder truck, I had people complaining saying, do you realize you put in a hundred and fifty pages of information? I said, it's one point five million. A hundred fifty isn't enough. But we are trying to be as transparent as we can because after all, it's town's money.
Sure.
Well, thank you for going through this.
Thank you, Al.
Pretty soon, we'll be talking to you about the next election.
Yes, sir.
And Andy, you've weathered your first year as chairman of the Finance Committee.
That I have.
And I think there was a sigh of relief when you said you'd do it again.
From you.
From everybody.
Yeah.
So as always, I want to thank our six loyal viewers. Town meeting review, we may have seven or eight. But it's important that you can understand, as you can see, we don't talk about you should vote, you shouldn't vote. On the town meeting, on the town website, is the Finance Committee's report. And that has the Finance Committee's position on every one of these articles. This show is not intended to try and sway people. It's intended to educate people. That's why we have Chairman of the Select Board, Chairman of the Finance Committee to come in and explain all the background. So I thank you for watching. And as always, may tomorrow be a better night than tonight, may God bless. See you at town meeting.